...a joint work session with the park board. And as we do when we have people here that normally aren't here, we'll go through introductions, starting with Councilman Ray Boehner.
I'm Jason Boehner, council member for Ward Three.
I'm Ryan Westco, councilman for Ward Two, the mayor pro tem, and the short timer on the council.
Charlene Huber, council member Ward Four.
Kevin Kellogg, Ward One, council member.
Sheldon Casmon, park board, Ward One.
Jim Haddock, park board, Ward Four.
Michelle Samers, park board, Ward One.
Monique Lewis, park board, Ward Three.
Melinda Hadishell, park board, Ward Two.
J.C. Beckner, pastor, First Baptist Church, Ringland.
Bill Manson, park board.
Jenny Sapola, park board.
Brian Harris, park board.
Eric Eastwood, park board.
I'm Pete Kirkoff, I'm the mayor.
Jim Fearborn, city manager.
Jay Holman, city council, Ward Three.
Derek Morehead, city council, Ward Two.
All right, with that, we'll go on to the first item, a commercial lease agreement with the First Baptist Church. Do you have any?
Just a couple of overview comments, if you don't mind.
Please.
Thank you. You have before you tonight two copies of the commercial lease agreement, if you have the entire packet. The first copy of the commercial lease agreement that begins on page five is that component of the agreement that the First Baptist Church sent back to us, just a very quick history to recap what's also in the memo. The staff and the council had earlier directed staff and our city attorney to work on an initial draft that was a modification that included the city council and park board's input from the last time we were with you all on this topic. Joe Willarth worked very diligently on that, got it across to the First Baptist Church. Their attorney has seen it, their board of trustees has seen it, and the product that begins on page five is what they have resubmitted as their proposal for changes. To highlight three primary and two secondary issues with the agreement in staff's eyes, in section 2.1, the church calls for, at the termination of the lease, them to have the ability to make the decision on how the property would be rezoned, and that the city agrees at no cost to the church to rezone it to whatever their preference is. Staff has difficulty with that for a number of reasons, not the least of which is we could be binding a planning and zoning commission and a city council 10 years from now or 20 years from now to do something relative to that. The pastor and I met today, and I informed him about some research that Mr. Catterett had done relative to our code that might get us past an impasse on that particular item and give us the ability to have the church's paragraph removed entirely, and I'm going to ask Mr. Catterett to speak to that, if he doesn't mind, right now. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Regarding the use of the property, the subject property by the church, the actual use of the property would be allowed for church use, whether it be church facility or simply a parking lot to be utilized for the church. There's no special use approval that would be necessary for the church either today or the future, whether we do this agreement or not, to utilize that property for church purposes. The one thing that the church would have to do with the property, if, for example, as I understand, they want to utilize it for parking lot, the parking lot would have to comply with our standards and our codes regarding parking lots, very similar to what the church did in the construction of the lot on the west side of Adams Street, across from the church. That parking lot is curbed, paved, meets all the requirements of the city. That is really the only thing that the church would have to do with the subject property regarding putting parking on there. The use is approved, so there would not have to be a change of zoning or a conditional use permit for the church to utilize the property in the way that they choose to utilize it.
And in fact, I believe the city would be, and Joe, you can kind of correct me if I overstate this, I think the city would be compelled to have to comply with that. We were running it past Joe earlier today, and he was indicating some case law where a church was trying to put up a recreation center and parking lot that a city disagreed with as far as it being a church use, but because the church was forwarding the application, the city was forced to comply with that. In short, as long as it's the First Baptist Church themselves saying, here's what we're going to do with the property at the termination of the lease, and as long as they comply with the elements that Mr. Catterett just laid out, the city would be compelled to have to approve whatever they were going to put on there regardless of how it was zoned. Is that fairly accurate, Joe?
Yes, we don't regulate by zoning the church. We will regulate their site plan or parking lot by health and safety considerations, and the city itself in this agreement wouldn't have to comply, but as a matter of policy we do, and so we would go for a conditional use permit for this park to show good faith and complying with the same kind of standards we expect of others, but legally wouldn't have to.
Would there be any, if you're okay with this, just by section, any questions or comments relative to that? It would be staff's intention on the next draft, going to the church then, to eliminate that paragraph, but provide them with the code section that would apply to how they would have to make application and put in a site plan for that. But staff would entertain any input from the park board or the city council that you might have? Terrific.
I think that's probably appropriate to pull that clause out, just to simplify the agreement, especially if we've already got something in place that allows them to do with what that clause states.
And the second concern that staff had was section 3.1. The latest draft does hold that the city is entirely responsible for the removal of the house, park board, and the city council will remember that in the draft that we sent across and in our earlier discussions, there was considerable discussion about the basement of the house being the responsibility of the city to fill in. Estimated cost on that was $6,000. Engineering and some initial work from the director of Parks and Recreation, Mr. Kennedy, has indicated that the cost to tear down the entire house, as it is now drafted in the draft that we received back from the First Baptist Church, would be approximately an additional $8,000, depending on whether or not there is also asbestos in the upper floors of the home. We do know that there is more than likely asbestos in the basement. That was a component of the $6,000. If there's asbestos in the upper floors of the home, Mr. Crass and engineering indicate that price could go up slightly from the $8,000, probably not more than an additional $4,000. To be honest, we're kind of at an impasse on this one. I don't really know, we're kind of leaving it up to the city council in the end to say, is it worth it on the house? One suggestion that we might make in conversation with the pastor today, the agreement's triggering point that causes the agreement to actually go into place is when something is done finally with the house. The house is sitting there right now. Maybe this is an issue that we withdraw, with the exception of saying, the triggering point would be when something is finally determined on the disposition of the home that's on the property, and until that time, the agreement isn't activated, the same wording that's currently in here, and we leave the discussion of the house or when one group or the other decides, if the city decides, we really feel like we want to get on to this particular piece of property and we have the funds to develop that particular area, then we could make the determination then, is it worth it to us to actually do this with the house? First Baptist Church may alternatively decide that they now have the funds to do something with the house and go ahead and take care of the component according to the original agreement that was in place. That's the best staff has to offer at this time. And pastor, I think maybe you might want to talk about the conditions relative to the financing.
Well, the, let me just say, I really want to see this go through. It's not, it's, I wish the house wasn't the issue. At First Baptist Church, we're in a process of revitalization, which means, at this point, we're looking at everything that we have in the church as far as what we need to do. We have pews we need to replace, we have a sound system we need to replace. You know, $8,000, $10,000 doesn't sound like much, but we also have $1.9 million debt that we're paying off, and that is our priority. And when this, when the city came to us, the house was not our priority, if that makes sense to y'all. And so, it's not that we're trying to be a stick in the mud here or be tough, if that's the wrong kind of language, but that's not really what we're trying to do. That's just not our highest priority. And when we went to the lawyer and had him look at this, he came back and said, you know what? You're not getting anything out of this, the city needs to take the house. Well, when you've got a committee that hears that, they agree. And if you talk to your lawyer and he gives you advice, you probably, you know, maybe should agree. So that's kind of the way this has kind of been taken at this point. But with all these other costs and stuff that we're incurring, what we're trying to do is reinvest back in the community, not in a house. That's not our priority. So, and one of the things I talked to John about, one of the things I talked to David and Jim about, it would really be nice if we could come to some kind of agreement to where we as a city and city council or the park board, could we find a way voluntarily to get this thing down? I know there are codes, I know there's processes for getting all that's done, I know there's asbestos possibilities there, but man, is there some way we could work this out so we could move ahead? Because I really think this is the only sticking point, at this point. Go ahead.
J.C., I have a great way that you can make some money if you sell us the land. We could just buy some pews and you could just...
First of all, you would want the pews. They're not that good. And secondly, we can't sell the land. And here's the reason why we can't. According to city code and parking, if we ever build a sanctuary there, we have to have that space for parking, so we can't sell it. And, you know, the way that it's configured, there's just not a way to do that. I understand what you're saying, but that's been brought up before, but we just can't do that. The other side of that is, if the house is gone and we decide to pave it, that's still a plus for the city because you've got it right there to use for the park anyway. And, you know, so...
Councilmember Westco.
Two questions. The first, having asbestos present, that doesn't create any type of public hazard, does it?
Not unless it is friable or crumbled up and bad. If we went in and we were to demolish the house, we have to bag it, tag it and bag it, so that, and we have to dispose of it properly and/or we have to... My asbestos training is leaving me after 10 years away from the school district, but encapsulate...
Encapsulate it. My other statement is, to me, I would be agreeable to having the city remove the house with the stipulation that instead of a 10-year lease, we would move to a 50-year lease. If our costs are going to increase, you know, two or three times, then instead of having a 10-year lease, move to a 50-year lease and removing the termination language out of section 5.1.
A concern that I have starts from the very beginning. I've lived here a long time, and I've seen a lot of changes, and I've seen churches grow and expand. And once the city makes this into a park or something of that nature, it will always be there, there will be no place for the church to expand. And I was wondering if maybe instead of us buying from you, you should buy from us. That maybe the best thing would be for the Baptist Church to prepare for its future, and that would be for the lock, that it would be owned by you rather than for the city. So that was my first concern, that we decide that first before we go ahead and talk about minutia. Is there any possibility that you all would ever want to expand and expand in that direction?
Not with the present debt we have, no. Do we want to expand? Sure. I don't know that we would build more buildings. Honestly, I think we would be more interested in helping people start more churches in other places. I think that would be more appropriate. Thanks.
I'm going to throw out a couple of questions or suggestions or food for thought. I hear what the pastor's saying as far as, you know, their priorities, and I appreciate that and respect it, and I, you know, I thank you for being forthright about that, you know, and there's no offense taken by that, because that's a priority. You know, I totally understand that and I appreciate it. But I look at the makeup of the council the way it is currently and the way it has been in the past, you know, I have never really noticed any loggerheads that would say absolutely not, that we're not, you know, I've always had that feeling that there was a spirit of compromise, a spirit of working together, and I think that that will continue, you know, at least I have that kind of faith. My question would be, if the churches and the board of trustees' minds would change in the future, would it be possible, you know, and Joe's there too, so listen up, would it be possible, feasible, or even advisable that, you know, maybe we could have first option if the church and the directors decided to finally sell that property? And then, another thing to think about is, can we write a agreement up that we, the city, recognize their need for parking in the future, if they do build a sanctuary, that we can somehow give them that in language in an agreement, that they can use that for that purpose? You know, I'm just trying to come to some kind of a workable situation here, you know.
A right of first refusal, our option for the city to be able to buy it at a future date certainly could be incorporated in an agreement if both sides agreed to it.
I'm wondering, when we look at the cost of demolition, is most of that cost associated with the asbestos abatement?
About, in the basement, we're probably dealing with about a 50-50. Again, the upstairs is an additional 8,000, and that's why we used a possible 4,000 number if there's asbestos up there, especially if it's friable because it's been blown into the attic as insulation. So a considerable amount of the cost, but not a majority of the cost.
Wondering if, in order to kind of break through this impasse, if we might be able to split along the asbestos line in terms of cost between the city and the church and see if we could come to that. I'm a little nervous about taking the asbestos performance, the abatement performance into the city in terms of us being responsible for it, but I am in agreement that, you know, that we could probably do the demolition without a problem.
And we have, to be clear, we would be contracting this out, actually bidding out demolition of the house if we were going to be doing it, and they would have to show qualifications for being able to remove the asbestos. You all may remember, we had a considerable amount in the Washington Street building, and we had to take that into account in the bidding. And we would actually first, actually put it up for auction. Sometimes people will actually pay you to take these buildings down for the scrap, but a lot of times they hesitate if there's dangerous materials in them. But it would be staff's, if we were so direct, that our first goal would be, put it up for auction, see if somebody'd be willing to come in and pay us to take it out and scrap it, and then if that didn't go anywhere, we'd bid out the demolition to try to get best price.
Thank you. I'm kind of curious as to the age and the condition of the house right now, and I assume that the church is doing regular maintenance to it and keeping it in, I don't want to say livable conditions, but in structurally sound conditions?
Structurally, you could walk into it. I wouldn't want to live in it, per se. The, there is no copper in it, all the copper's gone, water's been shut off, that's not available, the wiring's still there. At one time, we had some coons that got into the roof that ate through a hole, and we got rid of those things. And so, I don't know what they've done to the wiring. Wiring still works, but I wouldn't put my family in it.
Yeah, and that's, I'm sorry, that's...
It's okay.
That's exactly my concern, is, you know, that once a house isn't inhabited, it deteriorates, you know?
Right.
Varmints get in and they start rousting up that insulation in the ceiling, and, you know, what I'm concerned about, you know, as far as the public safety thing, is that when it is friable and it's not encapsulated or contained, then you've got the potential for a release, you know, and as building structures deteriorate, they become naturally weaker, and, you know, less and less of a storm can blow that structure apart. So, that's a concern of mine as far as for the health and safety of the community, so that's information I think I need.
In the original contract, the house was to be demolished by the church, unless I'm not reading it right. In this contract, it would be the responsibility of the city to take both the house, the basement, and everything with it. Since both the city and the church are looking at finances, could they not share the removal of the house, the cost of the removal of the house and the basement, et cetera?
Certainly, if so directed by the council, staff would return to the church if they said, let's do a split on this of some sort. Our return to the church would be just that, as we are directed.
I certainly see your point, but I think the pastor's made clear that they're following the advice of their attorney, and his position was that the city would benefit. They didn't see the benefit so much to the church, and therefore, they've got their money prioritized other places. I was intrigued by Councilman Westco's proposition of going to a 50-year lease and removing the termination clause, and I was curious as to what the pastor would have to say about that. I didn't hear any comment, but I would be interested.
I'm not opposed to that. Probably church members would ask the question of why, and so I'd certainly want to be able to explain to them what the reasoning was behind that. You know, anything's possible. Sharing is possible, you know, first of all, it's not a contract, it's MOU, so it's a proposal, it could be brought back, we could certainly look at it. I'm not saying we wouldn't, not saying we would, I just, I can't, the funny thing is in Baptist church, when you've got 10 people, you've got 35 different opinions, so you can't speak on behalf of the church until they vote on it. Y'all understand what I'm saying here, okay?
Sure.
But open to considering that.
And the reason for that suggestion was, you know, from a council's standpoint, you know, if we're going to invest more city money, you know, we have to be able to, and I don't want to say justify it, but, you know, we do have to be, you know, have some responsibility for how the tax dollars are spent. So, you know, lengthening the term of the lease, you know, I saw it as a win-win. You know, you can't sell it to us because you need it for, to justify parking. The city would just rather have it as a park, so if we lengthen the term of the lease, I don't really see it impacting negatively the church's position, because we're not going to use it for anything other than parkland, so it would be, you know, held, you know, in the state that it's held in now, that at some point you needed it for the parking to justify. That situation could be resolved. You know, it doesn't take any extra capital out of the church's, you know, their coffers, so it allows you to prioritize and to work the plan that you guys have in place. Again, I just, I saw it as a suggestion, as a win-win, to where we do take care of the house, to which, you know, if it were to catch on fire, it would become a healthy, you know, public health issue, so we could take that down. Again, I just saw it as a win-win all the way around, and that was the suggestion for it.
I got you, and I'm not disagreeing with you. I just, I can't make that decision, you know?
And I grew up in a Baptist church, so trust me, I know exactly the position that you're in, because I've sat through some of those business meetings, I totally understand, and that's kind of why I was suggesting it as a way, you know, as a selling point to both sides.
Councilmember Warren?
Well, I'll first start off by saying, while I have served on church trustees, and so I understand the number of opinions you can get, eight council members can get 16 opinions on any Monday night as well. For me, though, you know, it's a battle of perception here, because are we fighting over a mountain, are we fighting over a molehill, and neither of us know. And so, I guess I would be more inclined to want to have staff provide us with what are we looking at as far as a more realistic cost of demolition and deconstruction before we ever get to deciding? Because if it turns out we're fighting over a few thousand dollars, I don't think a counselor or trustee is going to feel the same way, but of course, when you throw EPA standards and asbestos abatement in there, those are scary words, but we don't know the degree of what we're looking at yet. So, I guess before I would want to form an opinion on this, I'd rather have an informed opinion with the actual, at least a reasonable ballpark of numbers before anybody tries to figure out alternatives and things like that.
Thank you. I'm sitting here, and what I think I'm looking at is a contract and a commercial lease agreement. Then I hear the pastor say a MOU. Would you like to expound on that for me, Jim?
I was actually going to charge into that one the second all the questions died down. It is, correctly, it is not a contract, and it is not an MOU. We've called it an MOU since the beginning of this, but it is a commercial lease agreement.
Okay, that answers that, and it's going to lead to my next question. And Mr. Westco has come up with an idea as far as extending it to 50 years and doing away with some of the things. What my concern would be with that, what do we do in the instance or the example, the case of that, you know, today we sit here and we know who we're dealing with. We're dealing with the board of trustees, this is the First Baptist Church, and they're dealing with us. But 50 years is a very long time, and I have, I've seen where, you know, in the past, you know, I'm almost 48 years old, you know, and over that 48 years, 48 years, I've seen churches go from churches to other establishments, whether it be a school, whatever, you know, it's no longer a church. Would this agreement be transferable to the next person in the case that the church would not be there? I mean, I understand that is a staple in Raymore, and I expect it to be there probably the next 30, 40 years, but reality is, is that as cities change, grow in that, properties become more and more lucrative, more and more, more, somebody else wants them more than, you know, they'll put a price tag on it, and they'll say, hey, we'll give you this much, we'll build you a new church over a little bit further out. Would this still apply to the next person in that instance example?
I can't see him. Has Joe turned his microphone on yet to answer this question?
As currently drawn, I did not make the document binding on successors and assigns. I gave both sides the flexibility in this, which was a 10-year agreement of a one-year termination notice, so I didn't contemplate anything like 50 years, and I did not contemplate it being on binding on successors and assigns, because the church, I don't think I'd seen of the dialogue or the thing back and forth, I'd looked at it that way.
And I also, oh, I'm sorry, sir. I also had that concern relative to the first section that we just now talked about, which, again, if it's not a church, then they would have to abide by the zoning that is sitting have to abide by the zoning that is sitting in there. So, only being a church matters to that one. Before we knew that, I had significant concerns with this, assuming that anybody could go in and buy the church property and if this carried over to them, but that does not exist.
J.C., so you and I have had plenty of opportunities to talk about your direction of the church and where you want to go. And you were talking about how you wanted to put money back in the, you know, put, you know, money into the, you know, church and into different programs that you guys have going, but how you want to put back in the community. And when I hear this, I'm like, gosh, this is such a perfect opportunity to put back in the community into the park. I mean, it's right in your back door and such a perfect place to be able to utilize. So, to me, when I see it, I'm like, this is a great opportunity to be able to put back in the community. So, I hope when you go back and you talk to, you know, your board, that you can angle it that way also. That it is a great way to put back into the community from this angle. Because I would like to see them, you know, be able to come in also financially on this. To me, the city doing everything, I, I hate to see them do, you know, the city coming in and doing 100% of this. I would like to see the church do something.
Well, I, I will remind you all that our church has allowed the city to use our parking lots free of charge.
True, true.
And we do all the maintenance and all that stuff on that. And so, we're not, we're assuming all the costs of that. City doesn't assume any of that. So, this is the argument members would use and board reduce and say, "Look, how many years have you had the farmer's market here? And how many years have we allowed you all to use all of that free of charge? If that's not putting back in the community," they'd be saying, "What do we have to do to prove that we're putting back in the community?" Because if y'all have not kept up on parking lots, that's a huge expense. So, you know, it's not that they don't want to. It, it's just that they don't want to feel like we're totally being taken advantage of.
No, and I don't want them to feel that way.
I understand that. I understand.
Yeah. And I don't want them to feel that way either. I just, I'm like, when I look at this park in your backyard, I'm like, "Oh, this is so perfect for you guys," you know. And that, and having that land right there is, you know, to me, and that's why, I mean, I'm, you know, like I said, you and I are friendly and we-
We've talked.
So.
Yes.
I, I've heard everybody's issues and, and, and what's going on. I think this is, even though the original discussion was we would take out, they would take the house out and we'd take out the basement. And that was the original agreement. Now, the house has been added to it. If you really look at the cost, assuming there's nothing big by the EPA that we have to come in and, and do something out of the ordinary, if it's $14,000, we're talking $1,400 a year, which is $116 a month to rent it for 10 years. If we increase the lease to make it a little more palatable for the city funding, if you increased it to 20 years, 50 to me seems pretty excessive, but if you increase it to 20 years, you're talking what, $60? $60? So, it's pretty cheap really to have land. Now, if you look at hard cost, it's kind of expensive because you're paying 14 grand to rent 0.69 acres of land. And I think you could, you could buy a full acre land. At last cost, it was, I don't know, 18 grand an acre, I guess, depending on where you get it at. So, if you look at the hard cost, it may not be the best deal. But if you look at soft cost, we have a great partner with the church. They've been very helpful with the farmer's market. The land is located next to where we are building. We have in the budget for next year, a pretty sizable expense to increase farmer's market and increase that park area. It's also big for Original Town. I don't know what it was, four, five years ago, there's a big plan put together for Original Town to, to rehab that and, and bring that as a feature of Raymore. This also adds to that. So, when you add those soft costs in, that part, when you start talking about cost, I don't think it's really that big of a deal in the end, assuming we stay at the $14,000 mark. I do have issues with a couple of other things in here whenever we get there, but that's my, that's my opinion on the cause. I really don't think it's very much at all, to be honest. And I know it's a pretty physically conservative city council these days, but, you know, you, you still got to spend some money. You got to bring in amenities for the citizens, if you ask me. This one's not a bad deal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We're looking at making this project a multi-phase project and doing quite a bit here. And basically, the reason that I like Mr. Westco's suggestion was that if we move it to something like a 20 to 50-year lease and we take out the termination clause, you've already said that the reason you want to sell us the land is in case you need it for future parking expansion. The way the contract is set up right now, we go in and we take all the expense, maybe up to $12,000 to $14,000 to remove this house. And then two years later, you decide to issue a year, one-year termination notice. We took care of all your problems and you built a new parking lot. I'm not saying that you would do that, but under the contract, you would be able to do that. And so, we're just looking for some protection for what would be not just this, but the other facets of the project that we're planning to do with this as we go forward. So, that's, that's my concern in this. And ultimately, that's what I was trying to, to arrive at, was a win-win for, for everybody. And, you know, the reason I suggested a 50-year lease, I've actually seen anywhere between 50 and 99, which is relatively standard with leasing property to government agencies. I even worked for an organization that they built buildings and then turned around and sold them back to, or gave them back to the people that they previously bought the land from and then just leased it from them. And, I mean, I've seen all sorts of creative things that, that work very well for whatever scenario that goes on. And again, you know, I was supportive of filling in the basement for the 6,000 because we have been such great partners with the church and I want to see that continue to move forward. Again, it was just a way to extend that time horizon, to make sure that that partnership does last, you know, a little bit longer. The term of it, you know, I'd be open to. I, I threw out 50 because, you know, the longer that the relationship we have, I think the better off everybody is. But again, I, I'm looking for a win-win.
Thanks, Member Huber.
I'm looking over this and as I understand it, that this is a commercial lease between the city and the church to develop about a community park. And yet, when I go to our municipal code, section 250.070, it says, "Business activities are prohibited in public parks." And it says that no one can do that except unless they are a duly licensed concessionaire acting under the authority of the Park and Recreation Department. So, I think we need to be clear as what we're talking about. Are we talking about a commercial operation where there's going to be businesses? Are we talking about a pure park? Because right now, this land is neither park nor is just owned by the city, right, Mr. Fairborn? And it's not really designated as park ground or anything else. It's just public property owned by the city. And I would like to know just exactly what it is that we're talking about. Are we talking about making an entire thing a park, the entire block? Are we talking about having part of it as commercial, which would be, where you're having the farmer's market? What is it that you're talking about? Because a farmer's market as such is not compatible with a park, a public park because of the different, differences in hours, the differences in, in usage and the differences in parking and what have you. So, I'd like to know a little bit more what it is that we're really talking about before I can feel that I can justify voting for anything. If we're talking about a commercial lease, then yes, we want something more than just 10 or 15 years if we're going to be spending a lot of money. Because remember, we're going to be spending taxpayer money for private use and there are rules and regulations regarding that. So, we've got to make sure that as a council, we don't break any laws and that we don't permit the Park Board to break any laws either. What is it? Is it going to be commercial? Is it going to have commercial? Is it going to be a park? Is it going to be owned by the city rather than the Park Department?
This, this section of land here is not going to be owned by the city. It's going to be leased by the city from, from the Baptist church to be used for a park. And I believe the farmer's market is going to be a park.
The council directed staff to bring forth a resolution at some point when this has reached resolution to turn this over to the Park Board.
I, you know, I, I like the idea of extending this out and, and the idea that we're talking about creating a longer partnership with the church. I mean, we have a whole slew of options here. I mean, and this is where Joe comes in and, and dazzles us. I mean, because we could even keep it at 10 years and we could say we're 10 years locked in and then the one-year termination occurs after the 10 years. And then it's a year, you know, there's all kinds of variations we can do here. I, I'm just, I, I don't want to have the tenor be that it's, we have concerns about the church here. I mean, let's be honest with you. And it was said before, right now, we own a significant portion of that, that lot there. And we use it. And we're using it now. And we, as residents of Raymore, we prey upon the church and the use of their premises and we don't ask permission already. And the fact is, is if they're going to use it for parking, no offense, I bet you anything, we'll continue to have the farmer's market out there and we'll just take that 0.7 acres worth of parking and use that as well. So, the idea is there's no real gain here for the church to do anything, anything more than we, we're already taking and using. The idea is we want to use this as a park. We've had a plan developed to utilize that, that we've seen in the last, about two months ago presented. And we liked it and it's going to be functional and it's consistent with what we want to do here. And if, I mean, are we, because I see us still arguing over section 3.1 here. And I, I don't care what the rationale of why or what could occur. The only thing out of this is money. And for me, I don't know how much this is going to cost. I've sat in deals on commercial deals and it's a commercial lease because it's a non-residential lease. That's the key definition there. But the reality is I've walked into commercial deals where the EPA cleanup costs were outrageous. So, you know, for me, I want to see the cost of the demolition be more solidified. That, because that's going to be a concern for the church because if we, if there's a, if there's an environmental hazard there, that's their problem right now. They want to know that. And if it's ours, if we're going to invite that in a lease, I can show you a Harley Davidson Supreme Court decision that makes us be very concerned about that regardless whether it's ownership or lease. So, the fact is, those issues need to be determined before anybody wants to move forward with this entire deal. Be, because I don't want it locked in on a 50-year environmental cleanup just because we want a long-term partnership. Because that's a bad partnership and that's the only bad part here. So, for me, I think we look at the cost of the cleanup and the cost of the demolition. We get those numbers between both parties and that drives the discussion. But I'm not worried about the relationship with the church. We've already kind of enjoyed a non, an involuntary relationship with the use of their premises coming into this. And we're probably going to do so a little bit with their generosity afterward. What happens in between is all good.
I was just going to add, you know, even looking long-term, you know, if the church is going to need this particular piece of property for parking, I could even see, you know, down the road, even a partnership. Because if they put a parking lot in, I could even see where the city would have a vested interest in helping put that in for parking for the, for the farmer's market. So, the longer, the longer the term and the longer the relationship with the church, the better both parties are, at least in my opinion. And I, I will disagree just on one aspect is that, you know, the city, we have a, a financial interest in, in, in doing this. But at the same time, the church is also going to have a financial interest because if we do assume the cost of the demolition, you know, that, that does, it removes an expense from them. So, we both have something to gain in, in the, the agreement.
When I look at that area, I think about, and I don't know whether the rest of you can understand what I'm saying or not. The Dean property, we liked it so because it had had all of the lights around it and you knew when you were there that you were in Raymore. I can see this lot right here being something where we would have the mayor's Christmas tree. We would have the whole area lit up and we could make it something that people would want to come and, and see and visit. And I can see lots of possibilities in that way. But I am, I have to admit that I agree with Councilman Morehead. We've got to find out about the asbestos before we can go any further on anything because it may be prohibitive for us to do anything. Now, having said that, I want you all to know that I have no personal interest anyway in this. But that land was owned by my parents and they built the house. So, I do have memories in it, but it has nothing whatsoever to do with what's going on now. It doesn't affect my thinking at all. But I want you to know that there is, for some of you that have been here a long time, you know that there is that relationship. But I have nothing whatsoever to do with what is happening right now.
About to address Councilmember Morehead's question. Is it possible to actually go in and look to see how big of a chore demolition becomes? You know, when he's talking about a, a full EPA, you know, deal, you know, a lot of times you don't know the scope of it until you actually are tearing stuff out of the ground. And at that point, we either have to enter into an agreement or not be in an agreement. It, it's not, is there a way to actually investigate it to determine those costs without actually being into the demolition?
Absolutely. Yeah, we could get a demolition contractor in here who's certified in asbestos removal, who's EPA certified and has taken all the proper, has all the proper certifications in place. And we, we could get a very, very hard price for the total demolition of the house. Some of our pricing is, is getting a little bit stale at this point. And come back to the group with, here's what it actually costs to do the house. And in the meantime, we can be working on the other sections of the commercial lease agreement according to the direction we received this evening.
From a private sector standpoint, in certain redevelopments, an environmental impact statement is required for financing. So, I know that there, that is available to do an analysis on environmental impact.
Other comments, Councilman?
What I was going to add to that is that, you know, and I'll refer back to my school days, back when I worked in seven different schools in Des Moines. We as unprofessional, untrained, unexpert, unexperted people in the school district, we learned that our little 11-by-11 floor tiles were asbestos, but our 13-by-13s weren't. That's how we identified it. But there is no way of telling by the naked eye. What you have to do is go in and have it analyzed, you know, under, underneath the laboratory's conditions. So, e- even the, the insulation in the attic, maybe even the insulation in the wiring, you know, it could all be asbestos lined. You don't know until those are analyzed. And that's what, what Jim's talking about. So, that would be part of the cost too. So, but, you know, we just can't go in and say, "Well, that's asbestos" because you can't see it.
Just a question for Ms. Huber. What year was that house built? Do you remember?
It was built at the same time that the little green building was built. I can find out, but I can't tell you right now.
Well, from what I-
They built both the little green buildings, the house, both of them. And they also built the house.
Well, what I'm hearing from the council is there, the section 3.1 is, is not an insurmountable thing. We just need a, a better number there. So, we can continue on then to section 3.5.
Thank you, sir. The section 3.5, staff had difficulty with on a number of levels primarily because it changes the hours of park operation to the park not being open by the language that's in there until 1:00 PM on Sundays. In conversation with pastor today, their primary concern, and if I mischaracterize this, by all means jump in, their primary concern is that a major event would be scheduled on Sunday morning that can, would conflict with their parking. Their concern is not that the park is open. I believe that staff could come back with some proposed wording that would be acceptable by everyone that is, that you can't, we, we will not have organized events there, but that the park would be open at 7:00 in the morning on Sunday until, I believe it's 11:00 PM at night, but that no events would be scheduled for the morning until 1:00 PM. Is that-
The house was built around 1960. And I understand that, was it 1973 makes the difference or something?
Councilmember Kellard?
I, I would think that, um, eventually, this, this can be turned over to the, to the park board. That, that's the council's intent. I would think that would be something that the park board would be able to set in their policy, that those concerns would be met, would be drawn out, would be written out and, and, and held through. You know, that, that's, I, I, I don't have any indication that, that, that they don't want that. So I, I would think they would be able to-
Every special event comes to us for approval anyway, so, you know, our policy would be no special events at this church before one o'clock on a Sunday.
Yeah, because I could definitely see where the church wouldn't want a motorcycle rally going on at the same time the services were, were taking place, so I, I would definitely agree with that.
If you have a motorcycle rally, I just want to be there, okay?
All right. Any other comments?
Very good. We will so incorporate, sir.
Okay.
The, uh, there were, there were two additional items of, of a somewhat lesser nature, and I'm going to try to get to them now. Um, one was relative to the, the signage, and you see that in section four-point-two on page eleven of thirty-one of the packet, page seven of the agreement, that we had originally had some very, very extensive wording in there relative to the signage. Um, the, the church has taken that out and basically, uh, says that, uh, signage in the subject area, and that's a significant word in staff's, or a phrase in staff's mind relative to this one, uh, would be by mutual approval of both parties. And they've taken out everything through Raymore code that you see there in parentheses. So all of the wording from at the discretion of the city of Raymore through Raymore City Code is proposed by the church to be taken out and simply be by mutual approval of both the parties. Originally, when, when staff first read this, we had a higher level of concern because it would have involved signage throughout the park. What they are talking about is signage that is put onto property that they own would have to be by mutual approval of both parties. And of course, the city would still be limited by city code as to what type of signage we could put on there, and that would, that would actually be the driver of all of this. But, uh, in talking with Mr. Catterett, it did not seem terribly unreasonable that if we're putting a sign onto their property, and we really don't actually, from the, the initial concept plan, you'll remember that this component of the property has sidewalks on it and playground equipment on it. The playground equipment sort of items would probably have some signage, like we put on all of our playground equipment relative to safety and being on your own. I'm sure the church would have no objection to that, but it did not seem unreasonable for them to have us, uh, on their property go for a mutual agreement, sort of a, a situation relative to any signage that might be on their property.
He's comfortable with that?
Final item, then, uh, was relative to, uh, the, the general, uh, uh, plan for the park going, uh, being, a- and I believe the word that they used was, Mr. Catterett, can you help me with this one on a section? Thank you. Uh, in consultation with, in, in discussions with, uh, in consultation with the pastor today, the, uh, it, it, it seems like what the church is looking for with this wording is more of, uh, what we would normally characterize as a good neighbor meeting. Uh, they, they have no intention of, of having, it, this does not, this does not mean approval by the church. It means we would have a good neighbor meeting to tell them what we're doing. They haven't even actually seen the concept plan that the council and the park board have for this particular piece of land. So their idea would be, at least let us know what's going to be going in. And of course, for their particular portion of the property, it's, that usage is so passive as far as sidewalks and playground equipment are concerned, that, uh, i- in any, in any event, the staff did not see this as, uh, this particular wording as any sort of a deal breaker, more of a good neighbor meeting with the church.
No, it does say consultation, but it doesn't say an approval.
Correct, sir.
Other, go ahead.
I'd like to make a change on page two of the lease. Commercial lease agreement. We are not in Jackson County, we're in Cass County. I'm talking about the, uh, commercial agreement.
That was, she's looking at the past. Yeah, yeah. That, that, that's the past one. There, there's two of them. This here was the past. This here is what, what the church and city staff has, has compromised on here.
This one here, they're not going to do this one.
Page six of thirty-one.
So on three-point-two, um, I personally would like to take the blue language out, because I think appearance-wise, it, it appears to give favoritism to the church. That's just, in appearance-wise, but I, I understand the good neighbor portion. I'm trying to find the link so you can sign up, because they're all public meetings with agendas on them. Not to be smart, but they're, uh, public meetings, but we can make sure staff calls you when we're talking about, uh, the park, you know, knowing you're interested in it. Uh, we do have some people that are very interested. Every time we talk about Hawker Ridge Park, they always seem to find that agenda and show up for all those meetings, so, uh, so I understand wanting to be there. I don't want the appearance, though, to, to be that they get first right of refusal or their pick of the litter for, for design of the park, which I would say most of it's probably done, although i- its funding changes, design can change a little bit. Um, that's, that's my only problem with that, is just the appearance of, um, preference.
The only issue that I would have with taking that out, um, you know, anytime that we are dealing with Hawker Ridge Park or things of that nature, Memorial Park, whatever, those are actually parks that the city owns, and we own the, the land outright. Um, in this particular case, we'd actually be, uh, putting a park on land that we have, have leased. So I, I believe that they should have a seat at the table, uh, even more so than anybody else, strictly because it's still their land, even though we're using it for public good. Uh, so to make the comparison to Hawker Ridge Park or any of the other ones, it's not an accurate comparison, because it's not exactly the same, uh, same type of land that we'd, we'd be using.
I think we can deal with that by just putting in their subject area and subs, and restrict it to that. In general, it sounds like they want, it's, if the concern is over the total design for both city-owned property and church property, we can just reduce that to the subject area, which is the church property. They can be consulted with in regards to anything that's developed on that property that they owe.
You know, from a construction standpoint, normally, the, this type of paragraph in a, in a landlord-tenant matter, the tenant is only receiving the right of use and enjoyment, not ownership right of that. And since there is a possibility of reversion, where it could revert back to the, the lessor, under these circumstances, I, I mean, it's pretty common that the landlord does possess a right to have general right of refu, you know, to say, you can and can't do something with the property. I mean, that, I don't think anybody in this room hasn't had a lease where that is possessed. Since they're merely to be consulted, that is, I mean, I've, I've never lo, known a landlord that allowed it to just be co, by consultation. Um, this is very soft language, and the fact that we just have to give them notice and alert them, um, wow. So, I mean, I think this is, um, extremely generous on the part of the lessor to give us this. But like I said, if I was the owner of something, I wouldn't allow the other party to have free rein on what they use, temporarily use my property with, because they could change the nature of it. When I get it back, it's not the same property, so, I mean, you know.
But since this is just about that property, doesn't this mean just about their section? I mean, so we wouldn't have to put that language in there? So they only have rights over their section of property that they're leasing to us, not over the whole park, correct?
Well-
No, it actually states-
Go ahead.
Sorry, sir. It actually states park.
It says the public park.
Well, does anybody have a problem with that? Because that does seem a little odd to me, that they would have over the whole park.
Well, and, and that's why I think your suggestion is-
That's why I suggested subject area, because then it's defining what they would have the right to consult with.
Because then you are starting to talk about something like Hawker Ridge Park or something, you know, when you are really actually talking apples to apples. Because I do see a problem with, you know, when it is their property, yeah, they should have rights over what goes on that, but the rest of the area?
Well, they're not really concerned in consulting and trying to tell the city what can go in the park. Uh, they really are not concerned about that. They are concerned about what might be constructed on that piece that they own. Now, the, the only other thing I would say is, there are a few skeptical people that would say, well, I hope they don't put in a, whatever, out there. Is there some way we can keep from doing this or that? And I'm saying, you guys are, sometimes it just get way off. But, but anyway, that's, that's all we need to do there.
Could staff possibly suggest that we insert the subject area language for the consultation, and then, um, some sort of language that, that indicates that once final design has been determined and approved, uh, for those areas owned by the city, that, uh, those plans will be communicated to the First Baptist Church? And stop it there.
You know, a- again, I, I don't have an issue with the way that the language i- is. You know, just from the standpoint of, you know, if, if somebody's coming to me and there's four parts of a puzzle, and I have one part of it, you know, I would want to be able to sit at the table as, as a partner in it with a little bit more consideration, even, even of the whole project, you know? Because if the city was going to put something in that the church was opposed to, um, why shouldn't they be allowed to say, you know what, we have a problem with the overall concept that's being put in here, when you are asking to use our property, which is a fourth of that project? Um, again, it, it, it doesn't say that they're given control. It doesn't say that they're given, um, you know, discretion over the direction of the project, or that they can stop it. They're just merely being consulted as the overall concept in a project where, basically, they own a fourth of the land that's involved in the project. Again, I, I'm, I'm happy to do with whatever the majority is. I just don't have a problem with the way it's worded, because I don't see it as an issue.
Other comments? All right. So you have enough to work on there?
We'll begin working on the changes discussed to all of the sections, with the exception of the removal of the house, and we will come back to the group once we have, uh, engineering and, uh, a demolition expert's, uh, initial pass at how much it would cost to actually remove the entire house by sections.
Go ahead.
Um, ju- just one question, if we're done. I guess I was just going to ask, we talked a little bit about, um, section five-point-one, I think, as termination? And I guess, Mr. Councilmember Holman, I think you alluded to the fact that, and maybe this is, I'm the only person, this lease can be terminated prior to ten years by the church with a year's notice, and that's the intent.
I believe the lease actually rel, reads that it can be terminated on one-year written notice cancellation to the other party at least sixty days prior to each annual renewal date. So it would be, yes, on a sixty-day notice, but it would be the annual renewal date for this particular agreement.
But it could happen year one?
Absolutely.
Okay. I, I didn't read it that way, but I, I'm glad we said that out loud.
All right. Uh, did we have any other items for the joint meeting?
Not on the agenda, sir.
Okay. Does anybody have any items for the joint meeting?
I would just like to say, well done on the disc golf course. Uh, as I drive by it, I see a lot of, I saw a lot of people. I haven't been out there lately, I haven't seen anybody braving the cold weather, but I've seen a lot of people use it over the last two or three months, so, very well done.
Other comments? Thank you. Go ahead.
Just a correction and oops on myself, and it's from the minutes of, probably will come out at our last council meeting. I refer to the beautiful red maples lining the entrance to the park, actually sweetgums. And I was reminded of that. My bad. They look like red maples. I apologize.
Well, they're beautiful red maple-looking sweetgums.
Red sweetgums, yes.
Okay. Well, thank you, everybody, uh, for coming out for the joint session this evening. Counsel, we have another item to talk about, so we'll just hang around as the park board takes off. All righty. Shall we get back into our work session? And remind everybody, we are still televised. Back to our work session. Trying again. Well, we've, we've lost one of our council members, but we're back to our work session. Um, the second item here, the domestic violence surcharge increase. Jim?
Thank you, sir. Uh, in August of this year, the governor signed, uh, House Bill twelve-thirty-eight into law, which did amend section four-eighty-eight-six-oh-seven of Missouri State statute. That particular section of statute allows the governing body of any municipality within a county that has a domestic violence shelter to place a surcharge on the tickets for each court case that involve a criminal action or violations of a municipal code ordinance. Uh, the amendment allows governing bodies to impose the surcharge in an amount up to four dollars per ticket. The city currently charges two dollars per ticket. Uh, so, in essence, we, the city was waiting to see if we were going to receive a formal request from Hope Haven, uh, to increase the surcharge that we're currently charging. Uh, representative from Hope Haven is here tonight, actually, two representatives from Hope Haven are here tonight, because the chief actually serves as a board member for that particular shelter. So I'm going to turn the microphone, with your permission, sir, over to the chief to kind of give a brief outline, and then Linda's going to talk about some of the things that Hope Haven does.
Thank you, Mr. Furborne. As usual, he has taken all of our thunder and told you all everything that we were going to talk about. Uh, you should have in your packet, um, the letter from Hope Haven, um, and as he mentioned, Linda Tesser is here with me. Uh, she is the director of the shelter, uh, at Hope Haven of Cass County. Um, and in that letter, it basically outlines, um, and I think there was an attachment, um, as well, the specific language of House Bill twelve-thirty-eight. Um, as Mr. Furborne mentioned, uh, we currently collect two dollars for every municipal citation- As Mr. Kierborn mentioned, we currently collect $2 for every municipal citation that comes through our municipal court that goes to the shelter. And of course, that's not unique to Cass County. That is true throughout the state of Missouri and any county that has a shelter that provides domestic violence services as well. So you have that letter and the language of that House bill, and that's been in effect. That $2 surcharge has been in effect for a number of years, I believe, at least ten, since it was last changed. I just want to say, and then, of course, Linda is the expert, and I certainly will turn it over to her, but throughout my life and my career in law enforcement, I've worked with the issue of domestic violence all throughout my career, both from an enforcement standpoint, when I was a young officer, making those arrests. The law changed in which those victims were no longer required to press those charges themselves. As a victim advocate, as a board member, not only here at Hope Haven of Cass County, but at two other domestic violence shelters in my previous life in Kansas City. And domestic violence is an issue that affects everyone. It affects your neighbors, it affects family members, you know, those sometimes unseen and unspoken victims that don't have anywhere to go. And many times, especially, you know, here in Cass County, but on the other shelters I served on as a board member, individuals end up in that situation because they have nowhere else to go. So the service that is provided by organizations like Hope Haven and others is invaluable. It's a service that is much needed in all of our communities, unfortunately, because domestic violence continues. Linda will give you probably lots of numbers, but the cost to operate the shelter for a day is about $1,300 a day. Of course, that price or that cost, I'm sure, fluctuates depending on the number of clients that are using the services. And I will tell you, just from my brief experience on the board here, that those folks, Linda especially, and I'm going to give her some kudos here, are working all of the time to make sure that they have funding for the shelter through grant applications, through fundraising activities. I have stood out in the cold at the booth, at the booth for Hope Haven, trying to raise money. United Way presentations, Linda did a presentation here for the employees here at City Hall about United Way funding and the current fees that we've already talked about. So obviously, there's a tremendous need, and, you know, this isn't the only funding that the shelter relies on. They are constantly working diligently in all of those arenas that I mentioned. So if anyone has any questions for me, I'd be happy to, before I turn it over to Linda.
Just a general question for staff. Since the city is the one who actually collects those funds, do we bear any fiduciary responsibility once those funds are distributed to Hope Haven?
No.
Okay.
I wanted to know if it's very much money involved. You know, that doesn't sound like much $2 to $4, and it's based on, what's it, criminal activity? So are we talking about very much money, even at $4?
Well, and actually, Linda would be able to, isn't it about $36,000 countywide?
Countywide, it's about $36,000. And actually, Hope Haven brings in, and I'm using my...
Using my 2013 numbers, Hope Haven's income last year was about $494,000. Of that, about seven percent of that was what we collect, city, in city and county fees, from five municipalities, soon to be six, because Garden City's considering coming on. And those monies go into general revenues. I think for the city of Raymore, right now, it's in the neighborhood of, you know, it's right around $4,000. I think I budgeted...
About $4,000.
Annually. Annually.
And I was going to kind of piggyback on that. I mean, I don't, when I'm standing in line with my own clients going through the process, I know that some of the night courts can get a hundred, you could have a hundred court fines or court costs assessed. But tonight's discussion, it's my understanding, we already have a $2 fee assessed. This is to determine whether to go as much as $4, or are we required to go strictly to four?
No, it can be up to four, I believe is the wording.
That's correct. It's, we're not required. All the legislation did was just enable jurisdictions to increase to four, if that was the desire of the governing body.
Councilmember Kellogg, then, Vayner?
Thank you. Just clarification. Are municipalities required, or do each municipality elect to assess this surcharge fine?
That you are not required, and in fact, I think as Linda has indicated, there are some in Cass County who do not currently charge.
I'd be curious how many different municipalities that there are that do not do this. And then I have another comment, but go ahead.
The, I think the mandate was for $2, which was about ten years ago. The fees haven't increased since that time. The five municipalities that currently participate are Raymore, Belton, Lake Winnebago, Peculiar, Harrisonville...
Pleasant Hill.
And Pleasant Hill, yes. The other, the other cities are smaller, so their fees are picked up to the county. So county provides us dollars for marriage fees, which is at $10 for marriages, and then there's an assessment of two, soon to be four, on the county. For the rest of the cities that aren't considered municipalities, they're not large enough.
Another question would be, do we in our municipal court assess fines? Do we have a fine structure? Or do those cases come to us in a municipal court of domestic assault?
We, depending on the severity of the case, whether or not a domestic violence assault would, it would come before a municipal court or the state court, and that a lot of times depends on, you know, the severity of the assault and whether a weapon was used and things like that. In, I believe, answer to the first part of your question, the fine schedule is set for different types of, all different types of violations, not even those dealing with domestic violence. But those fines and then those additional surcharge fees are also set way in advance, so those are already predetermined.
I guess where I'm going with this is my comment, or whether it's legal or not, I don't know, but in my mind, this is the way it should work. And I'm not lecturing. This is just the way I'm looking at it, is that if there is a fine, if we levy a fine through our courts for domestic assault and say it's similar to like a speeding ticket or any other fine, that there's a certain amount of money that goes to it for that fine, whether it be $250 or $500. Only $2 of that, of a surcharge, goes to the Hope Haven, in my opinion. Could we do this, if we do levy fines, could we direct those funds to the, to the Hope Haven? Would it be legal for us to do that, minus the court costs? Because we do have court costs. But, you know, morally, I don't want to make money off, you know, fines from domestic assault. I think those monies should go to support a...
The fines that we're talking about are not just domestic assault.
And I know that, but I'm speaking specifically of assault, domestic assault charges, that if they do come to our court, and if they are of a certain level, you know, justifying a $2 surcharge out of a possible $250, for example, fine, going to a service to provide shelter is immoral, in my opinion. Here we've got $252 that I would love to give to a service that helps alleviate this problem or, you know, deal with it. I don't want to make money off of this. I don't want to call it blood money, but that's what it feels like to me.
Councilmember Vayner, then, Holman?
You know, it's kind of interesting what, being a council member, what kind of habits you'll pick up as you do that. And one of the habits that I've picked up over the last year or so is that when we get the police report every week, I open that up, and I count how many domestic assaults are associated with that. And it's been particularly distressing to me to watch that number grow, just in the short time that I've been a council member. And so for my part in this, I'm all in favor of putting it all the way up there at the $4 mark. If we were allowed to put it up higher, I'd put it up higher. There are a lot of people, and the number is not going down, that need help, and they need resources put at their disposal.
Councilmember Holman?
Actually, you answered my question, made my point, sir. Thank you.
Okay.
First of, and I want to agree with Councilmember Kellogg for a second, and Vayner, in the sense that, you know, when I first thought about this, my first question was, while I am supportive of the cause, my concern was, I don't want to assess a fee to something that doesn't necessarily apply to our municipality. But in fact, we do, and we do have these types of charges. And as a person who's normally on the side of the defendant, I do have to acknowledge that there is a huge cost that society bears to process every single one of those situations. These surcharges are surcharges because it is a recruitment of an, of a cost, sometimes hard, sometimes soft, that the defendant can bring to society to have to bear. And so I am very supportive of this, to move this to $4, because we do bear a cost. It's not just, now, the great, the fact that Hope Haven gets this money is good, but society is bearing a cost here. That's the big issue here. And the person standing before their judge, they have to be accountable to that. They have to pay their price for what they've done. Now, to kind of throw Mr. Willerthen on this, based on a previous statement, since we do have a charter section that deals with assessment of penalty for a municipal violation, for us to allocate the fine assessment toward domestic violence, would that not require either a charter amendment or at least some sort of ordinance change? But that would be separate from, that could be done, but that would be a separate discussion, because today, we're just determining whether to go from, stay at two or go up as high as four.
I have not researched the issue, but I would concur with your analysis that we are not presently authorized to do that. I would look into see how, if and how we would go about assessing more fine money as suggested by Councilmember Kellogg to that. Yeah, I would limit your review and your vote tonight to the $2 to $4 charge that you are clearly authorized to do, if you wish.
And just to finish my, the point, we've dealt with these surcharges before, because we were, and this kind of in line with the police department and how we upped the fees for the costs, the administration of processing reports. So I see this as no different than that. Believe me, every person that stands before that judge, they're not worried about the fact that there may be up to a $30 court cost attached. They're more worried about the $500 assessment. So $2, we're not breaking anybody. You know, nice, large municipalities do this. I was, I have corrected, because you're right, a lot of the small municipalities have our county handle the administration of their tickets, and that's why the county collects it. So I appreciate that clarification.
I'm supportive of taking this to $4, because, you know, we have to keep in mind that the people who are going to be paying for this are the people who are breaking the law. And so there's a very simple way, if they don't want to pay it, stop breaking the law.
Or stop getting caught breaking the law.
No, no, stop breaking the law.
Okay.
We ask people to speed safely.
I'm in favor of this, and if I understood the councilman correctly, there's some other things that we might do to increase some costs, too, that we should look into. Is that correct?
Well, it was initiated by Councilmember Kellogg, but, I mean, we could look at how our courts assess or handle punishments, and there, I mean, the court right now, and again, I'm sorry, Mr. Willer could better speak on this, the judge has a pretty broad discretion how to handle the assessment of a penalty, or, and it does not have to necessarily be a fine, but, so there are a multitude of opportunities here. While I would hate to limit or, and tell our judge what to do, we do have the ability to at least offer some guidance and suggestions on alternatives that the judge could do.
Councilmember Holman?
It sounds like we have a pretty good consensus across the board. I have a procedural question. What's, we agree to do this, what's our step? Does it have to come before us as a resolution?
That's correct. It would come before you as an ordinance.
In that vein, and I have a feeling I know what his response would be, but we're on the eve of bringing a new judge on, I would certainly like to at least have his input on this. Again, I think I know what it would be, but I would like to hear about that.
Only that, we did seek input from the prosecutor and the current judge and court In light of all of the comments, I hate to put a slightly different slant on this, some of, some of their concern, they're, really, their only concern centered around the fact that while it is an issue for the city, and while these people are breaking the law, and both of those are common sense arguments, there, some of their issue was with the fine in general, they were kind of indicating, okay, so mom is driving down the street and a little bit distracted, I think this is the example that Bill Marshall used, and there's, there's four kids in the car, and she gets caught going six miles over, how does that equate to paying $4 to a domestic violence shelter? And so they, just, just the, they weren't arguing that this isn't necessarily a good fine, they weren't arguing that this isn't a great cause, they were just simply making that judicial argument that you might expect those two to make.
Thank you for pointing that out, and not to be argumentative, but to give a different perspective on that, is that an expired license plate in Belton costs you $105, an expired license plate in Raymore costs you $77. That's, that's my rhetoric back there, so, you know, and I don't want to say that I'm speaking from experience, but it's a very expensive experience. So, you know, I do agree with what Mr. Moorhead did say, is that, you know, if you're not going to do the time, don't do the crime.
Councilmember?
I hate to openly admit this, but since I have paid my fair share of court costs as a teen to the Raymore Municipal Court, when I was a little more lead-footed, I do have to say, first of all, the amount of court costs that we assess is comparable to virtually every municipality around us. It's not very much money. To be honest with you, what are, what are we talking about when we get a violation? You broke society's rules. It doesn't matter what the rule was, you broke it. And there are assessments against that. Personally, you can go through all of those surcharges and find ones that vary of a lot of different topics. In fact, you can look at every time you go license a new vehicle or anything with the state DMV, Department of Revenue, there's all kinds of stuff built in on those fees and assessments that I may philosophically disagree with, but the reality is, that's the cost of operation, that's, and we get a benefit of that. And if society feels that a good cause is, this is a good funding source for a good cause, and it fits, because we do have, it does connect with a violation that is in our city code, that I think that there is a direct correlation. I appreciate staff and the relevant parties' position on that, but that argument can cut both ways, and I just don't think it's sufficient enough at this point to argue. The mom speeding, $2, because we already assessed two, we're asking to go to four. We're talking about two bucks, and I bet mom with the kids probably don't get a lot of tickets. And six miles over, I'm fairly confident, it wouldn't have gone before the judge at that point, anyway, so.
Well, what I'm hearing from the council, move forward with the...
We'll bring an ordinance forward accordingly, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out.
Thank you, and I appreciate that you've all supported us this way.
And that concludes our work session. So we'll call to order the Raymore City Council's special meeting of Monday, November 17. Do Rohlko, thank you.
Councilmember Abdellgawad absent. Councilmember Vayner...
Present.
Councilmember Holman...
Present.
Councilmember Hubach. Councilmember Kellogg...
Present.
Councilmember Moorhead...
Present.
Present.
Councilmember Stevens absent. Councilmember Westco.
Present.
Mayor Kirkoff.
And I'm present. We do have a quorum. We need a report from city staff? Shall we start with that?
City staff discovered this morning that the way that we have been canceling meetings, it isn't, isn't in compliance with city code. So we provide you the city code and ask for a motion to cancel the November 24 meeting in accordance with code.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to cancel.
Question of staff first. This doesn't, when we canceled this meeting, it doesn't impact the fact that the second reading was going to be to install our judge? That doesn't mess with any timelines there, does it?
No, no, that was already in for the December.
Just wanted to make sure.
And actually, to follow up, as a general question, this does not impact any reading that is important for the city.
No, no.
In that case, I move that we cancel our November 24, 2014, regular city council meeting.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We have reason to go into executive session. So I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session, and I can't find my, where is it? Oh, thank you. We could go into executive session to discuss operational guidelines, public safety, first response, and public health is authorized by Section 610.02118.
Mr. Mayor, move if we go into executive session to address the issue that you just rattled off.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. We have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Abdelgawat absent. Councilmember Boehner...
Yes.
Councilmember Holman...
Yes.
Councilmember Hubach. Councilmember Kellogg...
Yes.
Councilmember Moorhead...
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens absent. Councilmember Westco.
Aye.
Okay, we'll go into executive session. We'll reconvene the main session just to adjourn.